America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so there are two items on the agenda. One item we're going to skip because it can't be dealt with tonight. So the main purpose of the meeting tonight is public review of the revised Bells Neck Land Management Plan. I'm going to make a few brief comments, then Amy is going to do a concise overview of the current revision. Then we will give commissioners who are in attendance a chance to comment. And then we will open the floor for comments and questions. Doesn't appear that we have a lot of people here, but I will request that people, when they're commenting or asking questions, be as concise and to the point as you possibly can. But we will have a little time to discuss things here. So I just want to publicly thank Amy to begin with for all the hard work Amy has done in putting this together. Amy has a lot of responsibilities, and amongst those responsibilities is care of all of Harwich's conservation land. That's the Conservation Commission's responsibility, but most of that falls on Amy's shoulders. And along with that, this land management plan is an important piece of business. And after that, I would also like to thank Brad, former chair, and also he has been a key person in developing this, as well as the rest of the commissioners, previous and current commissioners, previous Conservation Commission Chair, Ernie Crabtree, who also had a hand in this, and all the volunteers who also have contributed. So that's my little spiel. I'd also like to say for the public that the Conservation Commission will in all likelihood lose at least one current member, maybe more. We're already short one, six out of a necessary seven. If we lose two, we'll be at quorum, which is not a good place for us to be. So I would encourage anyone who has an interest in becoming involved and becoming a commissioner to discuss with Amy. Or your favorite select person, select board member, I guess is the appropriate way. So having said all that, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, people can feel free and reach out to me via the website or phone call. You can find applications to be on boards and committees on the select board section of the website. You don't have to have a background necessarily in conservation, you just have to have a passion. So with that, Matt, if you could bring up the presentation, that would be wonderful. Thank you. So the first Bells Neck Land Management Plan was commissioned by the Conservation Commission in the 2011 timeframe. It was done by the BSC group out of Yarmouth, who spent an entire year out on the site at various seasons, times of day, studying the site and making recommendations to the Commission. And after a year's study and public meetings, hearings about it, the Commission ratified that plan. Fast forward now, 12 years later, the plan is still in very good shape, but it's in need of a little updating. So the Commission has endeavored over the past couple of years to be making these edits that we have in front of you tonight. We've had it as agenda items on numerous meetings where we've kind of really gotten into the real meat and potatoes of things, the nitty gritty. But tonight is kind of the results of that, and we're happy to present that to you and get your questions and comments.
Please.
And if you wouldn't mind muting yourself, that would be helpful if you were online. Okay. Clicker's not working. First, a little background on the Bells Neck for those who might not be as familiar with it. The Bells Neck was acquired by the town for conservation purposes, a main reason to protect the Herring River and the Herring Run. The Herring River, Herring Run is one of the biggest herring runs in the state of Massachusetts. It's to protect the West Reservoir, provide an open space, provide open space for wildlife, and to provide a place for passive recreation. John Bell acquired the land from the Sacre Tocquehtee Native Americans in 1668, and since then it was acquired by the town from the 1960s up until present. The most recent acquisition is 2016. By various means, there was some eminent domain taking, some sale, some gifts, et cetera. Next slide. I don't know why I can't advance it. Apologize. Okay. So the Bells Neck Conservation Area in total is roughly 280 acres in size. However, this does not count the extensive marsh area that is south of the main part of the Bells Neck that is adjacent to the Herring River. As a variety of habitat types and wetlands, such as salt marsh, a river, freshwater pond, forested upland, bordering vegetated wetlands and coastal banks, it has almost three miles of walking trails. And due to the acquisition in 2016 of the last four acres on the northwest side of the property, we now have the entire perimeter of the West Reservoir protected, thanks a lot to the Harwich Conservation Trust as well for all of their efforts in making these acquisitions happen as well. And we have a variety of recreational opportunities. Okay. So again, the original Bells Neck Land Management Plan was commissioned by the Commission in 2011. There were several goals from that land management plan, and we're going to tell you a little bit about what those goals were and kind of where we're at with them right now. First, management of invasive species. Because of the variety of habitat types, there are a variety of invasive species that also call the Bells Neck home. We manage these manually. We've done manual removal of autumn olive, bittersweet honeysuckle, multiflora rose. And going forward, we're looking at potentially increasing management of invasive species, potentially by a more of a treatment method, which we'll go into more when we talk about upcoming goals. Move the parking lot at the Herring River. We have moved it slightly. The parking lot at the Herring River, cars used to be able to park pretty much right up to the edge of the flume and the water. We did, the town did install some heavy-duty wooden fencing, as well as try to move them at least a little bit far, move the cars a little bit farther from the run. And we did some plantings, some native wildflower seed plantings there as well, which I checked out the other day, and they're coming in nicely for the season. Another goal from 2012 was cease leasing out of the cranberry bogs at Depot Street and either passively or actively or passively naturalize them. Those have, those bogs have been, have ceased to be leased since about 2016, 2017, and they have been passively naturalizing up until this point with the exception of some manual invasive removal. Another goal from the 2012 plan was to reduce finger trails and trail widths. This is an ongoing effort, and we'll keep going into the next plan rendition, as you will see. Finger trails are the trails that are not map trails, they're trails that people make generally to get to a place faster, to go from a marked trail, maybe down to the water. We certainly want to provide access to the water, but in specific places and not just wherever. So it's a constant battle to reduce finger trails. We generally try to remove or move some dead wood on the ground and put them in the finger trails. People do tend to move them. We've also dropped some trees at times in order to reduce them. It hasn't been extremely successful. And then reduce trail widths. Most of the trails in the Bells Neck Conservation Area are adequate width for people to pass and are not too wide, but especially if you're entering from the herring ladder, if you cross over the ladder and head into Bells Neck that way, it is a little wide at the beginning. It's kind of a gathering spot out near the pond. Again, we want to allow access there, but maybe reduce the, I call it the bowl area there. It's basically a big sand bowl. Relocate parking area on Bells Neck Road. This was not done yet, but you will see it in our proposed updates to this plan. And purchase of adjacent land. So since the 2012 edit, a couple pieces, key pieces of land were purchased. One is what was called the Veroki Property on the southwest section that abuts the herring, the saltwater part of the Herring River. And then that was six acres. And then the hall piece, which was four acres, right as you try, almost exit the reservoir, keeping going north towards and under the bike trail. New and continuing goals. These were developed by the Commission over the past few years, and recently, the past like six months have really worked on this. A goal that goes forward towards into this new draft is moving the parking area on Bells Neck Road outside of the wetland buffer. And when I say wetland buffer, I mean outside of the 100-foot buffer zone to a wetland, which is our jurisdictional area. Right now, the parking area on Bells Neck Road is pretty close to what we call the East Reservoir. It's basically the salt marsh. And there's also a lot of parking on the road itself, which could be better managed. The idea was to move that parking area north up the hill a little bit more, so people would still have plenty of wonderful access to the wetlands and the trails, but remove that parking area where it currently is and re-vegetate and renaturalize that area to provide more of a buffer to the East Reservoir. Another priority the Commission felt was absolutely necessary was to improve Bells Neck Road so as to reduce direct runoff into waterways. If you're familiar with the road, both at the car bridge and especially at the Bells Neck or the West Reservoir, between the East and West Reservoirs, where you only have a foot or two elevation from the water, all that storm water and everything that's within it from vehicles or whatnot do flow right into the West Reservoir. So one of the goals from the Commission is to reduce direct runoff by grading, berming, to be determined, but it's one of the goals is to reduce direct runoff into the waterways. I should mention too, sorry, before I go too far, is in my mind, these goals break into two categories. And the two categories are, when I say category one items, items that can be done with volunteers or town staff that are going to require little to no permitting, little to no money, low-hanging fruit, if you will, things that can be tackled fairly quickly with little resources needed. And then the category two items are items that are going to require a little bit more study, maybe some engineering, some permitting and funds to complete. So that being said, the improved Bells Neck Road would fall into that category too. It's not any less important. I think it's just important to differentiate for the Commission and which ones are easier to accomplish than others. We'll continue to reduce the number of finger trails and reduce trail width at some locations while still allowing access. We'll continue to allow the bogs off Depot Street to naturalize with some aid, such as invasive removal, native planting. And when I say invasive removal and planting, this invasive, a particular invasive that is setting up a colony in the bogs off Depot Street is Phragmides australis, which is a highly invasive species. And unfortunately, one of the only means of effectively eradicating it is with a cut-and-wipe method of an herbicide, not a foliar application, but a cut-and-wipe method. The infestation is not so great that it cannot be tackled, so it should be tackled quickly. We did receive a quote back in 2020 for about $20,000. We did not act on it at the time. It is the Commission's thought to move this forward. And native replanting, one of the commissioners thought it would potentially be a good idea to, again, help allow naturalization of the bogs, potentially also offer something for both the wildlife and people, and do some planting of some highbush blueberry in some of the old bog areas for both wildlife and people to enjoy. So that's a thought. And there's a potential vernal pool on the property that we would like to certify, and you can only do that in the late winter, early spring, so we've missed it for this year. That's something that internally in my department that we could study and certify, should it be in fact vernal. Big-ticket item. In 2020, we had a dam report done of the West Reservoir Dam and Fishway. It was found to be in okay condition, but there are certainly some compromises that have happened to it. And we don't want to wait until it's too late. We want to start looking at that now and looking at, are we going to reconstruct it in kind? Are there other improvements and improve better-managed access at the Fishway? Are there other ways that we can do it better? Improve fish passage, improve public access, have less of an impact, if possible, to the I would like, before I finish, because I forgot to put this slide in, I want to chat a little bit about the Waterflow Management Plan for the Depot Street bogs. So Brad Chase, our Commissioner, who also works for the Division of Marine Fisheries, did a wonderful job and put this Waterflow Management Plan together. And the specific Waterflow Management, a Waterflow Management Plan is needed to meet habitat goals, to reduce mosquito populations, and to reduce the potential for fish kills of river herring and the bog channels. Now that we're not farming these bogs, the town has to manage the water, and we've been working with Cape Cod Mosquito Control to make sure there remains flow, so we don't get massive mosquito outbreaks there. But we really need to think about how we're going to manage the flow there. Pooling stagnant or stagnant water should be discouraged. It can be done by maintaining gravity flow through the bogs with, we have stop logs and boards in the runs. This potentially could be managed by our town Natural Resource Director. It had been in the past by our previous Natural Resource Director. I'm not sure if he's online tonight. I did invite him to the meeting. And then there needs to be seasonal coordination to manage water, seasonal water levels in the Bells Neck. Bells Neck, those bogs are highly influenced by groundwater, and you need, we need to be able to manage that, the amount of water in the bogs. And there also still needs to be some fish exclusion screening. We have a soft mesh net that's currently deployed at the inlet to keep herring from coming in, that are coming up from the West Reservoir. Over time, this net was degraded. It was replaced by Natural Resources in 2020, but we may want to consider a longer-term fish exclusion device there, and specifically one that's not going to impact other aquatic life. So just a lot of maintenance there. Also, related tasks are maintaining the bog perimeter, maintaining an eight-foot-wide path around the perimeter of sections that could function as an upland meadow potentially, limit mowing, but still allow some mowing. So we're keeping out woody vegetation, manage invasive plants. The Commission is looking to develop a list of desirable native plant species for each of the bog sections, because some of the sections, if you're familiar and walk the property, even a few inches height difference can mean the difference between wetland and upland vegetation. And a big discussion item with this Commission has been a gate. There currently is a road gate at the Depot Road entrance, hasn't been used in quite a while, with the potential going forward for having a herring harvest in future years. The Commission is thinking that would be a good idea to have a better gate, potentially an electronic timed gate, that would be closed during, if need be, during herring season or during certain times. I'm not speaking to this adequately, but I'm sure Brad could a little bit better. We're looking at potentially replacing it in the same location or maybe even a little bit farther up. So once you drive in the Bells Neck from that entrance off Depot Street, and the bogs are on your left and right, as you start to go up that little hill towards the run, maybe putting a gate right there. Right now, there are all kinds of potentially illegal activities happening up at that parking lot in the middle of the night, because it's not easily seen from Bells Neck or from Depot Street. So regardless of whether or not it's for herring or if it's just to keep things out of there at night that we don't want in there, might be a good idea to have a gate, we thought. All right. So that was a real basic overview. If anybody wants a full copy of the revised Bells Neck, the draft revision, please email me and I will get it to you. It is also on the town website. It's been distributed, I believe, by the Harwich Conservation Trust, which we thank them for. It's a 20-page document with 92 pages of appendices, so I didn't want to kill a forest to do That's my presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to start with you, Brad.
You are?
I am.
You don't have to.
Well, I am.
Okay.
Please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm just going to reiterate what you said about thanking Amy for all the work you did to shepherd this through.
Thank you.
It's been a really long process, and thank all the past and present commissioners as well. I've been here for five terms. I think this topic has probably had the most public hearing space of any that we've had, probably beating out darkened pier bylaw changes. At least five hearings in 2020, over a dozen hearings altogether, some very active hearings over the years. And I think it's an important product. I was here for the first plan that was put out. I think this one is a really nice improvement, and so I hope the public takes a look and looks closely at the future goals. There's nine future goals there, and I think they're really important. I think they're contributions to the management of this area. And I want to highlight the first one that Amy mentioned on reconstruction of the Fishway and the West Reservoir Dam. I think it's an opportunity to really just rethink how that area looks and to naturalize it, maybe put in a Fishway that's a nature-like Fishway that can pass all kinds of wildlife and maybe even people in kayaks. So it's really a chance to just deconstruct that area, make it really good, ADA accessible. There's a lot that can be done with that first one. So I hope people think about that and really dream about what could be done there. The second one, naturalizing the bogs, I think is really important. Lot of discussion on this topic, some disagreement. I think folks really appreciated the tradition of the cranberry harvest in that lot, in those bogs that went on for many, many years. And so I think it was a hard change to consider, moving away from that harvest, but I think in the long run, it's a flow-through bog that takes water from the West Reservoir, puts it back out into Herring River. Those type of bogs can be impactful to aquatic life, to the conveyance of pesticides, fertilizers, herbicides. So I think those flow-through bogs to a mainstem river like the Herring River can be very impactful. And I think on Cape Cod, we're seeing at a lot of locations, people are moving away from leasing out those conservation lands that are those flow-through bogs and trying to make them more natural and more accessible to a wider part of the public. So I recognize it was a hard discussion, but I think it was a good discussion that went on through many public hearings. So I just want to ask the public to look at those nine goals, consider those options, and please give us feedback. The gate question is really important, because no one wants to gate off an area. It used to be gated through most of my life during the herring run, when there was a harvest, to keep people out at night, to reduce poaching. In recent years, there's been documented poaching for river herring, as well as glass eels, which are really valuable in the export market for Asian markets. So I think that we are interested to have some type of gate management that locks it at night during the herring run season, which is when the eels are coming up as well. But we need public input on that. You know, do we just lock the gate at Depot, or do we install a secondary gate further in where the road's constricted, leading up to it? So I think public input on that is really important, because I do think it's essential that we have some type of a locking process, with a harvest or without a harvest, just to try to reduce some of that illegal activity that occurs in the middle of the night, as well as some of the poaching that I think probably occurs more than most of us realize. So I think those are the topics I wanted to touch on. Again, very excited that we've got to this point. Lot of hard work, and I think it's a real nice update to the original plan.
Great. Thank you. Mark?
By and large, I think the plan covers a multitude of good things. My hat's off to all the commissioners and participants, because there's a lot of discussion and a substantial lot of disagreement as well. But the process brought us to where we are. Opinions being what they are, here we are. And I think the benefits outweigh, this hurts, outweigh the cost of what's taking place. So onward and upward.
Thank you. Jim?
Okay, well, I just want to re-echo what some of the other commissioners have said and compliment Amy, Brad, and everybody else who has contributed to this revised plan. I think there was an awful lot of effort put into it, and I'm very anxious to hear any comments or concerns from the public before we move to adopt this revised plan.
Okay, thank you. I don't actually have anything to add. I think this is an important step, and I'm glad we're at this place. And I think, aside from the disagreements, I think that it's important to have those conversations and have the different points of view and have them aired in public, which they have been, and so we can move on and take an important step. And I think it is important, and I, in particular, you know, my involvement in this process and what I have seen here, the most prominent, important thing to me has been the bogs and the disagreement about the bogs and coming to some conclusion and agreement about what the step forward is. And I'm really anxious to see this adopted and approved by the Commission. So that's, I think that's it for the commissioners now. We have, I don't know how many, seven people online and two people in the room.
Maybe we do in the room first?
Okay, let's do in the room first. So if you have something to say, please step to the podium, identify yourself, and let us know what's on your mind.
I don't know if anything's on my mind, but I have a couple of questions. And I would thank you also for what you do for our town. It's very nice, and I think it's important to go through all this. I actually... I actually own half of a bog down by Red River Beach, so I am very interested.
Sorry, what is your name?
Oh, Jim, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jim Nickman, and I live down by Red River Beach. But a question I had is, how many bogs are there that need this type of attention in town? And I know this one is a special one, and it's so big and complicated, but do you guys have a lot more work on your agenda that you have to look at a lot of other bogs out there?
So the only other, I'm gonna make sure I'm getting this right, the only other bog area that the Conservation Commission owns, or has care in custody over, I should say, is the, what we call the Main Street Bog, which has been formerly leased by Leo Kokounis, and recently Leo has stepped back from his lease, and we have leased that property to the Cape Cod Technical High School for, to create an agriculture and animal husbandry program out there. So I'm trying to think, I don't think there are any other active bogs, or, you know, recently active bogs, that the town owns. I know the Harwich Conservation Trust has a number of, they have still some bogs that they lease out that are in production, and then they have a number of properties that were retired cranberry bogs that are either naturalizing by themselves or being actively managed. But I believe, other than the Bell's Neck and those bogs, have been fowl or not farmed for probably about six to seven years now. The only other one I think that we have jurisdiction on is, or that we have care in custody, is the Main Street Bog.
What about Robbins?
That one has been, we do, Robbins Pond Conservation Area up in northwest Harwich. They've been not farmed for over 20 years now. That is pure, like, naturalization, just by the way, it's, you know, it's naturally occurring. We haven't, we haven't done any management of the bog area in there in 25 years.
And just to note, I mean, there probably are a number of small bogs, like the one that surrounds my house, and ours is full of invasive species, and it's sort of, you know, somewhat disturbing when you have to have all that, and it ruins, it ruins a lot of the pluses of the bog, but, so I appreciate that you're thinking about all those things too. Thank you very much.
So can I ask?
Yeah.
I live near Red River Beach as well. Where, where is the bog?
The bog starts on Old Wharf Road, and it, you know, comes up from the water, and it goes all along Depot Road.
Yep.
And then it cuts across to Julian Road behind our house, and then it, and then it comes back around to my neighbor's house, who owns the other half of it on the Julian side.
So, but that is long since abandoned, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, it's definitely abandoned.
Not immediately recognizable as an abandoned bog until you look at the ditches up against Julian Road or something like that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I wouldn't say it's, you know, it's lost. We worry about it, and our neighbor worries about it, so anyway. And there are a lot of people in town who walk through it, actually, you know.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, yeah.
Especially after they've cleaned it up for mosquito treatment.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you.
If I could just add, South Harwich is really loaded with foreign bogs.
Old bogs, yeah.
Long been abandoned, 50, 75 years, and, you know, the pine growth, it looks like almost woodland unless they're really wet.
Exactly.
Off of Gorm Road, you have the Andrews River bogs, and those have really just transitioned really nicely in their own to some management, I think, by the owner.
The current one.
But they've transitioned very well, so it's interesting to see how these things can go back and become very, you know, useful habitat for all kinds of wildlife.
Right.
But I think some, in some cases, invasive plants can enter into them, but South Harwich is loaded with these type of habitats.
Yep. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? I guess not.
Nope.
So how about online? Do we have questions or comments online? Anyone care to raise their hand? I don't hear anything, so there we go. Yes, sir, Mike Locke.
Yeah, hi, I'm Michael Locke, Executive Director of the Harwich Conservation Trust. I'm getting a little feedback. I don't know if you can hear me clearly.
Sounds fine from here.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to contribute comments. I wanna echo the praise for Amy. The town is very fortunate to have Amy as the head of the Conservation Department, who, as we know, is not only managing over a thousand town-owned conservation acres, but also handling these increasingly complex permits that intersect with the town's wetland protection bylaw. Thank you to the commissioners for your work in that regard, and also on the update and recommendations to this management plan. And Harwich Conservation Trust, the staff and volunteers are glad to partner with the town and Amy in particular, and the longstanding relationship that Amy has cultivated with Maricor. HCT also works closely with Maricor, helps out with these land management efforts. Updates and recommendation to the plan are practical and needed. We know the Bell's Neck Conservation Land is a very popular conservation destination, critical habitat for a variety of plants and animals, and Harwich Conservation Trust looks forward to continuing to work with Amy and the town on habitat protection restoration efforts. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Also, online is Tom Evans, President of the HCT Board of Trustees.
Good evening. Do you have comments, Tom, or was that just an acknowledgement?
That was basically an acknowledgement. Mike has said it all, and we have enormous appreciation for the work that the Conservation Commission does and that Amy does in particular. The one thought that has occurred to me is, and I know this more from my spouse, who walks in the Bell's Neck area than I do, that there have been individuals who have gone in at odd hours with bicycles that are specifically equipped with baskets and equipment that seem, that seem what, you know, rigged for herring and eel catch. And I think with the advent of electric bicycles that can even go into different, you know, into different paths and trails, I think the gate consideration is an extraordinarily important one, and for good reason, but I think it's probably, I don't, even if you do it, I don't think it's gonna be the entire solution. I don't know what the solution is. You know, I support all of the creative thought that you can bring to it, but unfortunately, I'm afraid that when people are intent on doing their poaching, they'll find a way to do it in this day and age, so that's, that's my two cents worth, but your work and your thinking about this is laudable. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have someone else? Please identify yourself and go ahead. Yes, sir, you're raising your hand. I can't see you now.
I'm Robert Yankowitz, and my wife and I live on Lothrup Avenue, near the Wooden Bridge, so we have a great view of the marsh, and we walk in the, in the Bell's Neck area regularly, and I just wanna commend the commission for the report. The breadth and the depth of it was astounding, and I wanna thank the Conservation Trust for sending me the email, so I could read that this morning. Read the whole document, it's very impressive, I support all the goals. And picking up on what Tom Evans just said, I didn't realize that poaching was such an issue. We might post signs that say bikes prohibited, although I've never encountered a bicyclist during the day when I walk, and that won't stop people at night, of course, and I don't know where they poach, but it might be possible to put motion-sensitive floodlights up around the poaching areas, which might discourage poaching. That's one thought I had, and once again, thank you, I had no idea how much work was done between the town and the commission and everybody. And Mike, I'm gonna be in touch with you to see how I can become a more regular volunteer besides just cleaning Lothrup Avenue whenever I'm here. Thanks for the great work.
Okay, thank you. So if I may just ask Amy, I mean, I've already forgotten your name, sir, but
Robert.
Robert suggested motion-sensitive spotlights. Well, I have two questions about that. One, that in conjunction with trail cameras or something might be an effective thing to do, but my question, I have a question for Brad, which is, does it, most of the poaching happen at the fish ladder, or are people going to other odd spots on the shore of West Reservoir or the Herring River downstream? Are there opportunities, I guess is the right question, downstream?
It's really focused on the West Reservoir fishway. You need a choke point where eels and herring bunch up, and that's the fishway, so there may be some upstream, maybe at the culvert at the bike path, maybe it's some of the other fishways, but those are outside of the conservation area. So I think it's happening there, that's where it's been seen in the past, and so I think a combination of gates and maybe night vision trail cams that will be activated with motion might be a good thing to do, because it's really, it's harder for people to see it, it's happening probably in the early hours, and so I think with more enforcement, it could be at least clipped off to a low level. So I, you know, I'm concerned about it, but I think with gates and maybe the cameras, you can probably get to that problem or reduce the problem.
We have a few cameras, and they are sensitive tonight. They have a range of about 150 feet, so if we can, and in the past, I've had the police department help me install them or DPW in places that are not so easy for people to get them down, because we have had one or two stolen over the years that were hidden but not well enough. And the only thing with our cameras is, and if they could just be around the herring season, that's, it's probably doable, they're battery-powered, so it's one of the things, and the card runs out, and with a popular area such as the Bell's Neck, it's gonna be taking tons and tons of pictures, so if the commission wants to do cameras, which I'm in favor of, we may wanna consider a different type of option for a camera that would potentially download directly, you know, use the Wi-Fi network or something like that. They are more expensive, it requires a plan, just like a cellphone does, but it might be something to think about, but we do have a few decent trail cameras that we could use.
Yeah. If I can add, the poaching will probably occur over a two-and-a-half-month period.
Yeah.
So it's probably limited. Other activities we're concerned about, but maybe not as much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else online who would like to speak?
I'll just introduce myself. I live over in East Harwich. I am a herring counter.
I see.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, but I didn't catch your name.
Okay, Frank Breezy.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, and I'm a herring counter, so kind of, you know, interested in the plan, I've not had a chance to read it yet, but you're asking about poaching, I mean, I haven't seen anything at West, but up in Hankley's, I definitely heard a couple of people talking about guys going in there, I think at the top of the fish ladder, probably poaching, you know, pretty close there, but again, that's not at West, that's up at Hankley. But anyway, I would basically echo what other people are saying, great job doing this. I'm looking at the plan now, I mean, it's, you know, pretty amazing, in-depth, I love West Reservoir, I'm a transplant from Maryland, so I really enjoy the resources there and appreciate everybody's work on it.
I think everyone who wanted to ask a question or make a comment has done so. I think at this point, we can talk about the commission's next steps here, whether I'm interested to know, whether commissioners are interested tonight in voting to approve this. We've had a few comments. It's not clear to me that any of the comments would lead to any changes in, in the, in the thing, there's a little bit of cleanup that has to be done, but I don't think it involves any substantive changes, so I'd like to hear from commissioners about their thoughts on next steps. Anyone care to speak up, or do I need to put you on the spot?
I would, I'd suggest that we talk a little bit about the gate and maybe zero in. The language right now has an option, thank you.
Thank you.
Of having a gate at the street and then a gate inside. I like the idea of having a revised gate at the street that can be automated, and then maybe have just a regular gate on a hinge with a padlock that is where the road constricts to go the fishway, where the town departments could choose to lock it at times. And so that's, thinking about this, listening to people talk, that's what I prefer right now, is to really rely on that outside gate for when fish are there, when you might have your biggest problems, to lock it with some frequency that we all agree on, and then have a secondary gate inside.
Are you suggesting that we need to resolve that question and nail that down prior to approving the land management?
I don't think we do. I think we all discussed at the last hearing that we, let's put an option in there and listen to the public. And I think we heard yes to the gate, but maybe not a direction as to what the gate should be, so I don't feel we need to resolve that, I just thought we should talk about it, because it's the one thing that's, it's in kind of a draft form as an option, and I like that in a future commission, interaction with the department could decide how they want that to go, but I think that's kind of where it needs to be, is to have, you know, some formal process at the street, a coordinated process, and then have a secondary gate that could be a seasonal decision, you know. You know, we don't want to exclude folks that, handicapped folks that need to park right inside. I think there's times you wanna let people come inside, and maybe there's events or things, so for that reason, I wouldn't wanna have the only gate inside. Have that as like a service gate that could be open seasonally, but that's my thought on the gates.
I have a, I've been thinking about this a lot too, since we put it in draft form. I was initially a fan of the, an interior gate just past the bog before you get to the hill, so that way you're not completely excluding folks from the property. I still think, so, but I've kind of gone back on that, and the reason why, so I'm, I would recommend an electronic gate at the road, could just be at Depot Street, like we have a gate now, same location, make it electronic, really only be closing it at night during, during the herring season. I'm just not sure what the secondary one would accomplish. People, if they wanted, because I know we have sometime, sometime night walks and other activities that either the town or maybe the trust would wanna do in the Bell's Neck, they could still park on Bell's Neck Road and come in that way, it's really just protecting the choke point of the fish ladder. I think if you were to put a gate farther, just a little bit in, approximately where the bogs are, I think you'd still potentially have some issues potentially there, and if we have another access to the land in general, being on Bell's Neck Road, I don't see a huge issue with just having, like we've had in the past, that singular gate at the road, if we have another option for people to park on Bell's Neck Road to access the land.
Right.
Just a thought.
Yeah, it's really the idea, do we wanna reduce some of that vehicle traffic inside and close? The second gate would give you an option to do that seasonally.
Yep.
We didn't hear from the public on that, I think a lot of folks would probably not like that, but I don't think we want any more vehicle traffic inside.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, the commission could easily just say, okay, gate in the street, and we'll see how we feel. It doesn't have to be in the
And only at night and only during
I think so.
The season.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think so.
The herring season.
I've got a thought about that. My concern about the gate up by the street is traffic flow, people being partly in and then backing out.
Hmm.
Potential for somebody to get into an accident up there. I'm inclined to be favorable to a gate down at the beginning of the uphill rise going out to the fishway in conjunction with some fence to direct that. You've got a home on either side. If there was any illicit activity in the off-hours, I'm very sure that the watchful eyes would notify the appropriate authorities. I would think for general safety, that would be a consideration.
That's a good point. Because if you leave, if the gate is where the gate is now, there's enough room for one or two cars to still pull in right there.
Right. Somebody's got to back out eventually.
Right.
And right on top of that hill.
Yeah.
You know, if it only takes one, it'd be a tragedy.
Mm-hmm. That's a good point.
My only thought is that I think we need to give some more discussion to the potential of security cameras in the area, both for the poaching and for the potential illegal activity which may or may not be going on in that area. But I don't think that issue needs to be resolved before we adopt this revised draft.
My question about the gate out near the street, I mean, you've got a point about safety concern, I get that, but my question is, without somebody on site-
Mm-hmm.
-you're going to close the gate when someone's in there and then you're going to have a problem. I mean, if it's, I don't, that's the thing that's always bothered me about the automatic gate, is there's no way of knowing whether someone is already in there and somebody, somewhere, it's either going by a timer and it doesn't matter if you have a huge sign that says this gate will close automatically at six o'clock or whenever, whatever time, someone's going to get caught in there and I don't, I mean, maybe it's manageable. Maybe if you put up big signs, people will get the message. I'm not convinced that that's the case.
John, how do you feel about having a motion detection inside release, which is really common with a lot of properties, where a car approaching from the inside would, would trigger an opening? It could lead to foul play.
Yeah, right.
But with cameras, you would pick up the foul play. People could get in there before seven and then go inside and wait till it was dark. But again, it's, it's two and a half months with cameras. I think you, you might eliminate some of that.
I think there's going to be a learning curve for people. I mean, we would certainly, regardless of what type of gate you choose and what the hours are, you're going to be open or not open. It'll, we'll do our best as we can to get it out there that this is happening, the gate's closing at eight o'clock or whatever. They will have to call, if you get caught in, you may have to call the police to come let you out. But my guess is hopefully after a few months, people learn and word gets out that this is what's happening. I don't want to overburden the police department by any means. And we can certainly, if we go with a gate, you know, say that we really want to hear how it's, how it's working for them and if they're getting an exorbitant amount of calls because I think at the beginning, they probably will. Because again, no matter, you could have a billboard down there and people still won't see it, so.
So I was interested in, it was Tom Evans who pointed out that people are riding their electric bikes in there. And I don't think there's any way-
No.
-to keep those people out. I mean, you can put gates up, but you can get in with a bicycle from all kinds of places.
Various access points, yeah.
So where all this leads me is I think that we should consider, and it's not even in the plan, and it's maybe not now, part-time warden who is responsible for, during the season and maybe during the correct hours. And we have a shellfish warden in town, right? I don't, I don't know what the job description is for the shellfish warden, but fish and wildlife or fish warden who would be responsible, if we have a gate, for making sure the gate is closed at the right time, but also monitoring trail cameras and just being aware generally of activity in there. You know, the problem with that idea is then you require funding for, and it's a different kind of funding than just buying some equipment. So that's problematic, but I would like to see that idea open for discussion here because I don't, and particularly since the season is being reopened now. And so it's going to be-
Maybe.
It's, well, it's being contemplated, so seems to me that makes things harder to police.
Yep. If I could add, John, to your concern, so part of the things that the Board of Selectmen, it's their decision at this point on the harvest.
Right.
One of the things they've been talking about and considering is establishing a herring commission. Many towns, not many, but a good number of towns have these and they're very functional. They're essentially a collection of herring wardens and they can be volunteer, they can be appointed with authority. I think the Board of Selectmen is considering whether to establish, we even have, I think, bylaws that recognize a herring commission, but they have, it hasn't occurred forever.
Hmm.
So that could be a vehicle where, under the supervision of the Department of Natural Resources, these herring commissions get involved with that. And, and maybe they check on the gates. And, and so I, I think that's, that's being considered and I think it's a good vehicle for this. You know, a three, five, seven-person herring commission-
Mm-hmm.
-either advisory or with some authorities that gets involved in these activities. That's a good model, I think.
Okay. So this is item four, further discussion and the gate as well. I mean, that is not, you know, those two things aren't mutually exclusive.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I suggest we, we turn the language on that item in the plan to be somewhat generic, saying that a gate is being, you know, that the commission would like a gate and, you know, again, I, I understand the safety concerns, it's a very real concern. I feel like without a gate on the street, it, it'll be so much easier to come in there, park inside, and even if there's a secondary gate, you can walk in and do your poaching. So I still favor a gate in the street. I just, I hadn't thought much of your concern, but it's legitimate. That's a, that's a pretty busy turn there. And so I think we just have to think about maybe having the gate further out with, you know, clear reflective tape or something.
Yeah, it could be closer to the road than it is now. It's set back, so if you pull it closer to the road and you don't leave a parking space for people.
Or you see it and say, okay, I'm not going to execute that turn and, and keep going. So that, that's something that could be done. But I, you know, if you guys want to, you know, put off the specifics on the gate till later, that's fine too.
So to that end, we have, we still have some CPC funding that was kind of set aside. I've been holding it for the gate, it's about $12,000 left. We don't have to use it on a gate. We can use it to do other management on conservation lands that were purchased with the help of CPC funds, such as many in the Bell's Neck. But I've been instructed that it is likely, because that was a line, an item from 2020, that if those funds, that those funds need to be expended this year. So whether it's a gate or something else, doesn't have to be tonight, we don't have to, but we need to find a use and a good use for that, for that $12,000.
Was part of that money obtained for fencing and gates and so forth?
Which we've already done.
Yes.
So we, we have, we can buy more fencing.
Original amount.
That's leftover from the 20.
Yep.
I've been very frugal in getting things for as cheap as I can. So the, we've bought several hundred feet of, linear feet of that heavy fencing. We bought four trail cameras. We bought brand new conservation rules and regs signs and those are installed. Something caught my throat. And I feel like something else, but we still have $12,000 left. And one of the items that we mentioned in our CPC application, it's like an included, wasn't necess, like one of the items that we had talked about was a gate.
Seems to me that it would be prudent to leave the, leave the management plan as generic as possible, but absolutely move ahead on a decision.
Mm-hmm.
And if it can be done within that budget, that's all the better. And I suspect it could be.
Yeah. Item number nine, as written, it just says an improved Depot Street gate. You could say improved-
Pretty generic.
You could say improved gating, you know, mechanism. The option language is, was there for the public hearing on the secondary gate. So you could remove the option language and just, you know, tone down number nine, but just recognize, yeah, we need to have some gating option for the spring fish runs.
Right. Because there's no, there's no misleading part of that in any, in any way.
No.
Whether it's 200 feet in or directly at the beginning of the road, it's, it's still the same entrance.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I think from a public interest, it, it's really more the, the process of managing it with this, the town departments and the commission. The public is probably fine with whatever option we come up with. I, you know, I, I go there quite a bit to check the counter late in the afternoon, seven o'clock, eight o'clock. Not that many cars. I don't think it's a, a big pool of people to be there at that hour when you would be apt to close it. You know, six o'clock, yeah, there's people there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, through the evening, there's a lot of people up in the other bas station and so forth too. A lot of guys will stay right till dark or after.
The bas fishermen come at whenever the tide's right, so yeah, you won't see those. Yeah, so that's another thing. Yeah. Yeah, we didn't get any comments on that. They could park inside and walk in.
Or on Bell's Neck Road and walk in that way.
Yep. The stripers don't show up until probably two-thirds the run is over.
Mm-hmm.
They're there for-
All the way up.
Kind of tail end. So it's not a huge burden for them, I don't think. And they can come from the other way.
Okay. I sort of think we can leave it as it is, that part. I don't think, I agree with Mark, I don't think there's any need to change that language. So we can either act tonight or put it off, but if we put it off, one week maybe.
We're off a court a few years so far.
Yeah, and there's two sides to that. What's another week after so many years? On the other hand, I would really like to see it-
Yeah.
-done.
Well, I, I thought there'd be comments that might lead us to edits.
Yeah.
Really didn't get them tonight. So it's up to the good of the order. I'm fine with moving tonight.
And I'll, I'll just add that this is a living document. We don't have to wait another 12 years to re, to re-edit it. So, you know, if in a couple of years from now, we want, we have major changes, or even in a year from now, if priorities change, we can.
Yeah. We, we first talked about an update in 2017, so that was like a five year, the language first said a five-year update.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I don't really see what would happen during the next week that would change any of our opinions. So therefore, I would be perfectly happy if the group decides to move on this this evening.
So who would like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll move that we approve the revised draft to the Bell's Neck Conservation Area Land Management Plan originally adopted in 2012 and revised and presented to the commission this evening, May 29th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four and zero.
Where's your gavel? This is gavel-worthy.
Right.
Well, nice work, everybody.
Didn't even bring a bottle of champagne either.
I know. I know.
Very nice.
Okay. Thank you, Amy, again.
Thank you all.
For all your hard work.
Thank you all.
And you, Brad, and all the commissioners.
It's additive on Amy's busy schedule. That's, that's a lot, you know, to keep the wheels turning and do something like this.
It's far delayed, it's far, it's taken far too long, but I'm glad that it's, that it's at where we're at, so.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of good discussion.
But it's, no, not to, I mean, far too long for, on me, it's, you know, I feel like I took too long on it, but we're doing, we did the best we could.
It's a better document because of the extra time, I think, you know? It's certainly, those nine goals really stand out and they, stronger than they did on earlier drafts.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. I don't think we have any other business tonight, do we?
We do not. We have a fairly lightish meeting, hearing-wise, next week. We have a few, a lot of small business. Then the meeting on June 20th is looking rather beefy. I have a few things that I'm going to hand, that you're going to take on your way home tonight. That way I don't have to deliver packets to you. I am doing my, I have to take a bunch of time off, otherwise I'm going to lose it. So I'm pretty much taking Mondays and Fridays off for like the next month.
Nice.
Don't lose a day.
I know. I had, I had, I've been here a while, so I have a fair amount accrued. I can carry over a certain amount and I was way over that, so if I don't use it, I'll lose it.
It's madness to lose it.
I know. I'm not. It's just, time got away from me this year. And our new assistant agent, Lillian, Lily Gooding, is starting on Tuesday.
Oh, nice.
So she comes to us from the Orleans Conservation Land Trust and previous AmeriCorps. And I'm very excited. We had an outstanding pool of applicants. It was a very difficult decision to make. We're excited to, to have them start.
Nice. That's great. That's great news.
Mm-hmm.
Nice to know that there was a good response.
There was next. So I was told by administration that this was the most qualified pool of applicants they've seen for any one position in a very long time.
Wow.
And I interviewed a number and honestly, they, they were all fantastic. So it was, it was, they're, they're all going to go on to do great things, so.
Well, I'm going to move that we adjourn the meeting.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.